Well, I guess we'll get going. Because it's a little after six. So I'll call this meeting to order and welcome everyone here. And it looks like. Went down the table. We have everyone but Heidi Kendall, and I believe she's on her way. So all trustees are present and the student trustees are here except for Willard. And I've been Sealy Swan will be available telephonically. So that's great. So now we'll stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So now we move on to item number three on the agenda. It is to review, revise, and approve the agenda. Are there any requests from any trustee to modify the order in which we would be discussing the agenda or to otherwise modify it? See none, then we'll move ahead as it has been set. So the next thing is to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 12th, 2017. First of all, are there any corrections, additions to those minutes? Seeing no one speaking up. Then is there a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of December 12th, 2017? Moved by trustee Wake, seconded by trustee Decker. And I'm sorry, losing track of train of thought. So all trustees in favor of approving the minutes from the regular meeting of the December 12th, 2017 board meeting, please indicate by raising your hand. And trustee Wake, are you have a hand up? Okay, you probably had it up and I didn't see it. So it is unanimous as to all trustees present. Now we move on to public comment regarding non-agenda items. These are comments from the public who want to bring to our attention anything that would fall under the jurisdiction of MCPS. And because it's a non-agenda item, there won't be board discussion or comment because in order to have decisions made about agenda items, they have to be noticed up to the public under the Open Meetings Act. But we'd love to hear from people if anyone has anything that they'd like to share with us. And if you have public comment, please come to the podium. There's a button you can press and a red light will come on. If you have an unusually spelled name, if you can spell whichever part of your name is unusually spelled. And otherwise, if you represent an organization, indicate the organization. And other than that, we'd love any public comment. Thanks.
Hello, my name is Michelle Gray. And in all disclosure, I have to let you know that I'm proud parent of Marina Gray. I'm student trustee. I'm also on the board of the Missoula Education Foundation, as well as I serve on other boards in the community. But today I'm here speaking as a parent of a student who's involved in Sentinel DECA Club. Sentinel DECA Club has over 160 students and has been very successful in sending students to nationals. Typically, they send about 40 a year annually. Although this club is one of the largest in the state for all clubs and even sports teams, it continues to have only one advisor and very limited funding from MCPS financially. As you know, last year, a Title IX discrimination allegation was filed against the club and were investigated by the school. The outcome of the investigation concluded there was no blatant violation, but it was determined that there was a bit of a boys' club mentality being exhibited and that policies and procedures would be put in place to address these issues. One of these new issues would be to get an additional advisor to help out the club, to help establish better systems. I spoke with Dr. Fuller and Mr. Hartman recently to be given an update on the club. And I was informed that although the request was made for another advisor, it had not been approved by MCPS. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that more resources be given to this club. I'm not here to disparage Mr. Hartman or the fine work that he has accomplished, but I simply believe that this program has grown and it can be managed more successfully than it was when it was a smaller club. We can't continue to manage this club the same way it was when it was much smaller. Mr. Hartman needs support and resources, as do the students. DECA prepares emerging leaders and entrepreneurs for careers in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management in high schools and colleges globally. As adults, it's our responsibility to teach and model the correct ways that can be, you can be expected to be treated in the workplace as well as you do your business in the world. With only one advisor for over 160 students, Mr. Hartman cannot be expected to provide the needed oversight at all times. We are all aware of the national movement of time's up. Time is up. It's time for MCPS to support Sentinel DECA program, both with personnel, resources, and monetarily. Sentinel DECA is a great club, and I only want to see its continued success as all of you should as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments on non-agenda items? Seeing none, then we'll continue with the agenda items, which is 5B Correspondence. There is written correspondence in the packet on page 14. Then we move on to 6A, which are the student trustee reports. And so Marina, do you want to start? And we'll move down the table and end with Sealy Swan.
Good evening. We're only a few weeks into 2018 and Sentinel remains as busy as ever. I'm excited to announce that OPI has released the four-year cohort graduation results for the class of 2017. Yet again, the Spartans lead the AA schools with the highest graduation rate by a large margin at 90.3%. When you consider this data in light of our other high-performance metrics, dual credit, extracurricular performance, ACT achievement, our AP program, and our lowest dropout rate and more, there is no question that Sentinel remains the highest performing comprehensive AA high school in Montana. So we're very proud of that. This week Sentinel will be hosting the Rocky Mountain Classic Wrestling Meet on Friday and Saturday. Teams from all around the Northwest region come to compete in this. The Sentinel NHS will be volunteering to help with parking during this massive undertaking. Swimming will be where I went to Kalispell this past weekend. So congratulations to Delaney Carlson with her first-place finish in the 100-meter breaststroke. Andrea Porch for her second-place finish in the 500-meter freestyle. And Bremer Deaton for her second-place finish in the 200-meter individually medley. Sentinel Girls Basketball beat Crosstown Big Sky 90 to 48 last Saturday and will be playing tonight against Ronan at home at 7:15. The Boys got a win against Big Sky 66 to 60 in a tight game last weekend. They're playing in Ronan tonight at 7:15. Sentinel's clubs are continuing into the new year with more enthusiasm than ever. The Missoula Robotics Team kicked off their season this weekend and will spend hundreds of hours over a six-week time period working in the Sentinel shop on this year's brand-new robot. The Missoula Speech and Debate Teams are hosting a tournament this weekend, January 12th and 13th, for all AA high schools and some local ABC schools. This is the last tournament to prepare for state, and they're still looking for community judges. If anyone is interested in judging, they can sign up at missoulaspeechanddebate.com. No experience is necessary, and the judging is incredibly rewarding. So come see what Missoula students can do. Sentinel Special Olympic athletes will be heading up to Lost Trail at the end of the month to compete in the Winter Special Olympic Regional Competition. So we're wishing all of our athletes good luck and reminding them to keep warm. Sentinel's DECA members are preparing for the state conference at Fairmont Hot Springs next month by going to workshops with business professionals and DECA alumni. Members are practicing presenting their role plays and writing their business plans. The Spartan ambassadors will be hosting a cram fest on Thursday for underclassmen to help them prepare for their finals next week. Also this Thursday, Sentinel Student Government will be putting on a winter sports assembly starting at nine o'clock. On January 24th at 6:00 PM, Sentinel will be hosting our annual showcase to display all that our school has to offer. So be sure to come by and find out what truly makes Sentinel one of the best schools in the state. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gabe and I'm a student trustee from Big Sky High School. After a great holiday break, things, it's safe to say, things are going smoothly back in full swing over at Big Sky. With finals coming up and the end of first semester next week, students are being encouraged to ready themselves to perform well on these tests and finish the semester strong. I've split my report into academics, arts, and sports and other items. So I'll go ahead and get going on the academics section. We have exciting news from one of our teacher librarians. Mrs. Rebecca Krantz was recognized by Governor Bullock yesterday for gaining her National Board Certification. So we're very proud of our librarian. We had two Big Sky students in the month of December receive a congressional nomination for the US Service Academies from all of Tester, Danes, and Gianforte. And we have one student who has received an appointment to the Naval Academy. In our arts, we have the annual Big Sky High School Jazz Band Blue Note Cafe on January 19th. This is an exciting event. Restaurants and bakeries from around Missoula donate desserts for the show. The auditorium at Big Sky has turned into a fancy jazz club. I encourage you to attend. Tickets are sold at the door. It's a great time. We have three Big Sky students who performed at the New Year's Eve First Night Spotlight. We had one second-place singer-performer, and we had several Big Sky alumni that won last year who were the stars of the night, the performers. Big Sky thespians will present the play "That's Not How I Remember It", the last weeks of January. It's a student-directed piece done as part of someone's senior project over at Big Sky. And our sports, we did have an exciting Crosstown Boys Game on Saturday versus Sentinel. Unfortunately, the Big Sky Boys did not come out on top, but both Sentinel and Big Sky student sections showed out strong and prided for a very fun and exciting time between those two schools. We have our Big Sky Swimming Senior Night this weekend, not this weekend, excuse me, but January 20th, the next weekend, at the Grizzly Pool. It's also the Missoula, the MCPS invite. Over winter break, Big Sky hosted the revived Eck McHugh Memorial Alumni Basketball Tournament. This year's proceeds for the tournament will go towards purchasing a new scoreboard at Big Sky, at the Big Sky Gym. It was a positive community event and will become an annual tradition again, once again, at Big Sky. Other activities to note, we had our Holiday Ball on my student government in Big Sky. This was the first dance in five years I was hosted at Big Sky. We had over 400 students from all Missoula high schools attend. This will now be an annual event and it's fit works very excited for the future. We made, Big Sky Student Government made over $2,000 and donated a large portion of that to our Family Resource Center to help our students out around Christmas time. And finally, just a couple of weeks before the break, the Big Sky and Sentinel Student Governments had a joint meeting over at Big Sky. We wanted to share ideas and make plans to potentially work collaboratively in the future. The group, the first thing we're going to tackle together is to work on putting on the annual Missoula High School Dodgeball Tournament, which will take place on January 28th. And we're looking to get that ramped up and have an exciting time between all the schools and dodgeball. So it'll be fun. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dylan Deshaun. I am the student trustee from Hellgate High School. So obviously after, not obviously, after the break, Hellgate students got to go back to school and realize we have a brand-new cafeteria. The cafeteria is super nice. The food's the same, but the, it looks nice, yeah. We got two new bathrooms. The boys' bathroom, part of it is still under construction due to some miscellaneous with freshmen. Now going from the hallway, the main hallway, to the cafeteria. Unfortunately, due to these, the construction, they're super tight hallways. It's a little bit annoying. A few students have talked to me about some of their discretion against that. So with this construction going on, obviously, there's going to be quite a few classroom rearrangements. The two math teachers, Mr. Lynn, Mr. Fields, have been moved to different places, kind of hopping all over the place. The culinary room just moved to the third floor, to the library. Brand-new room. Everyone's super excited to start using it. And so with this construction, some of the heating, there's some, quite a bit of heating problems. I have two quotes from students. One of them is "So hot." Another one is "Everything is like a sauna." The heating is definitely a big problem right now at the moment. A few teachers don't really know how to use their heating systems, unfortunately, or their cooling system. So definitely would be good to address some of that. Ms. McKenzie, our choir teacher, was just certified by Steve Bullock for being on the National Board Certification. And we had a, three Hellgate students performing a little trio First Night Spotlight. They got the first place there. It's Kennedy Coon, Bella Wright, and Cadence Wilson. At the end of January and at ThessCon hosted here in Missoula, the drama, the Hellgate Drama Department will be hosting the Gorgon Sisters. It's a fun play. You guys should come see it. Thank you.
Hello?
Hi, Abby. You're ready to give your student report for Sealy Swan?
Yep, I'm all set.
Perfect. Go for it. Thanks, Abby.
All right, so going on at the school, we have semesters on the 18th next week. So we've got finals on Wednesday and Thursday next week. So students are madly studying their classes and trying to get ready for finals. We've got the outdoor club is doing a ski trip to Discovery on January 26th. The student council is doing a blood drive January 16th from 12 to 5 o'clock. And we are getting lots of students that are willing to donate. So that's really exciting. They're also going to do a snowball winter dance on January 20th. The Leos Club is doing a, is working with the Lions Club on a skating party during Winter Fest to help them out with that, where they will be doing things with young kids and teaching them how to ice skate and that sort of a thing. And every Friday, three Leos or so go down to Sealy Lake Elementary and Swan Valley Elementary and do crafts and play games with the kids for a little bit during their lunch. And then moving on from school, we've got sports. Winter athletics are in full swing at Sealy Swan. Both girls and boys' basketballs had a hot start with 2 to 0 in the preseason tournament in Frenchtown. Now after Christmas break, the teams are all prepped and ready to get flowing again after a long stretch with no games. Last week, the girls went 1 and 1 with two tough road games against Charlo and Lincoln. The boys came away with a loss at Charlo and their game at Lincoln's was suspended after a power outage midway through the fourth quarter. The Blackhawks were up 18 when the lights went out, and they're going to finish the last five-minute swing with Lincoln comes to Sealy Swan in February. And then the next Blackhawks games are against Darby at home on Friday and against Victor in Victor on Saturday. And that's all.
Thank you very much for being available. We appreciate it.
Of course.
Thanks. Just an explanation, since student trustees also usually have a lot of other obligations at this point, if you're, we'd love to have you stay as long as you can, but it's, you know, a longer night than some of you can accommodate with your other demands. So feel free to leave whenever you can. Then we'll move on to the Health Insurance Trust Fund Report. So included in the packet is the Routine Health Insurance Trust Fund Reports for the months of October and November 2017, found at page 20. And then 6C are any announcements from Superintendent Payne.
Thank you. You know, it's always difficult to follow the student trustees because they steal your thunder sometimes. But I did want to recognize Becky Krantz, who's a library media instructor at Big Sky High School, and Ellen McKenzie, who's a choir director at Hellgate High School. And as was mentioned in two of the student trustee reports, yesterday Governor Bullock was in town to recognize them for a very significant accomplishment. And that's completion of all the requirements to receive National Board Certification. So a shout-out to Ellen and Becky, and we appreciate the two-year process they completed in order to achieve National Board Certification. There are a number of items contained in the board packet on page 22. Just to highlight a couple, Thursday, January 11th, trustees are scheduled for a building visit to Sentinel and Big Sky. And Friday, February 2nd, trustees are scheduled for building visits to Willard and Hellgate. Thursday, February 22nd, trustees are scheduled for building visits to Porter, Meadow Hill, and Washington. And I'll be asking Lorna to make contact with trustees to verify who we should expect at each of those visitations. We will, as a district, celebrate Martin Luther King Day, which will be a holiday for all students. It's next Monday, January 15th. The following Monday, which is January 22nd, is a professional development day. So there's no school that Monday either. So we'll have two consecutive four-day school weeks. Regular board meetings will continue. We'll have a meeting January 23rd and then a meeting February 2nd. No, that's not correct. February 13th. And with that, I would encourage you just to take your gander at page 22 for other calendar dates.
Thank you. Now we move on to 6D, which are announcements from trustees. Are there any announcements from trustees? Seeing none. Then we'll move on to the Consent Agenda. The items listed under the Consent Agenda are routine perfunctory items that we see on a regular basis that usually require a little discussion by the board. So under our board policy, we can place them on a consent agenda, which means that the board won't be discussing them, but it also means that the public can make public comment on them. And so there are three, to approve the out-of-district attendance agreements found beginning on, found on page 23. To approve, whoops, and to approve the revenue and expenditures report for November 2017, which is found on page 24 and with the warrants available in the business office that support that report. So is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. As I indicated, since these are routine items, we won't be discussing it. But is there any public comment on these items? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the consent agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees. Then we move on to 8A, under Old Business, which is to approve the first reading of Revised Board Policy 2145, Suicide Awareness and Prevention. Mark, do you want to provide the background or do you want me to?
Either way is fine. I would just mention that this came before the trustees previously, although it's listed as a first reading. There were significant comments and suggestions made. Megan took those back, and you'll find in the packet on page 26, black line version showing the relevant changes. If you want to look at a clean copy of the policy, it's presented on page 27 in the packet. And based on the notes that I had, I think Megan did a great job of capturing the essence of what was discussed at the meeting. She's here tonight to provide any additional background or feedback with regard to the policy statement. So it's before you tonight as a first reading. If the board sees fit to advance it, then we will post it for public comment and bring it back for adoption at a later date.
Thanks. And so before I entertain a motion as to the board policy, are there any questions for board council about the modifications made to the language from the initial proposal? Thinking that's a very successful modification if there are any changes then. And so if there aren't any questions, then is there a motion to either adopt at first reading or not adopt at first reading that proposed Policy 2145 addressing student awareness and prevention? Moved by trustee Decker, seconded by trustee Kendall. And now it's time for any board discussion or comments? Are there any? Trustee Decker?
I just wanted to say, great job. I think this is really clean and provides strong direction, but gives the administration a great deal of professional say in how to carry out that direction. So thank you very much for that.
Any other, trustee Loren?
I'm just real pleased with the addition of the volunteers to this, in addition to staff.
Any other comments? Board comments? I will echo what everyone else has said. I think what was pointed out at the last meeting was that when it is board policy, it's better to err on the side of having language that is adaptable and which can be supplemented by policy, rather than trying to capture fairly detailed pieces of information that could shift depending on how the legislature, the Congress acts in the next year. So thank you for, you know, providing a really good balance between detail and policy. And with that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of adopting as a first reading the Board Policy 2145 captioned Suicide Awareness and Prevention, which will mean that if the motion is adopted, then it will go out for public comment, and we will see it back again after the appropriate time for public comment has expired and considered on the second reading. So is there, we have a motion. Okay, so all trustees in favor of adopting on first reading the Revised Board Policy 2145 Suicide Awareness and Prevention, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. And then we'll move on to 9A, which is Smart Schools 2020. And Burley, it looks like you have some folks to introduce concerning a presentation on the Sentinel High School Bond Project Design.
Yeah, thanks. So we're very excited tonight to talk a little bit about Sentinel High School and the design thus far on that project. MMW is here. Mr. MacArthur, Don MacArthur is here tonight to do that presentation. And just to kind of recap a little bit, we have Langless and Associates as the general contractor on that project as well. And then we have a public meeting at Sentinel High School in the Margaret Johnson Theater tomorrow night at, is it? 6 o'clock PM. So feel free to join us again for a very similar presentation, but to get some public input as well. So with that, Don?
Thanks, Burley. It's been, what, maybe eight or nine months since I was here being formally appointed by the board? We've had a good time working out with Sentinel what this project should look like and excited to give you a glimpse of it here tonight. It's kind of a whirlwind. The last time I gave this presentation, it took an hour and 15 minutes, and I think I got 10 minutes. So if there's something people want to hear about that I skip over, interrupt me or make me go a little slower. So let's see if this works. Just to recap of the bond promises, and I think the highlight that I wanted to make here was just to recall that one of the big issues with the high schools, including Sentinel, is that they needed new heating and cooling. Not new cooling, but cooling. And some new roofs and other things. So almost half the project is a deferred maintenance issues. And then there were four or five key items that we were to take on per the bond. So upgrading and improving some classrooms, relocating, clustering, band, choir, orchestra, and drama programs around the Margaret Johnson Theater, renovating space for the automotive program, renovating or creating a STEM center, and doing some enhancements to security and the site, in particular, parking lot. So these are super hard to read. It's a 260,000-square-foot school, and we're doing little bits of work all around it. But these, the colored areas are where we're doing the majority of the work. And I'll just buzz through what the colors are, and we can delve into them if someone wants to. But starting from the upper left is the current automotive building. Right now, about maybe half to two-thirds of the building is used for the automotive program. We're going to renovate the entire building for use for automotive program. There's currently some auto two and three being taught off-site, and they're going to move into this building. So that's piece one of the project. The light blue that's just to the right of that is a new STEM center, and that's in the pickleball courts. If people are familiar with the courtyards around Sentinel, kind of between the gym and the woodshop. And we're excited about how this is going to look. I'll show you a picture of what that is going to look like in a second. While we're kind of looking at the overall, there's squares and circles on it on this plan. The circles are seismic upgrades. So the building has, you know, obviously stood the test of 60 years already. But to meet modern codes, it needs some seismic braces that are going in each one of those circle locations. And the squares are areas where we're going to update some bathrooms. So one of the other big goals that we heard as we've been working through with the EIT at Sentinel has been to try to change the feel of Sentinel a little bit. It's kind of sterile as you walk down the hallways and the bell rings and there's a throng that just busts from one place to another because there's not a lot of places for students to be out of the classroom and in public space. That orange area is a place that we're going to create a new commons. And that actually is a computer lab right now that adjoins the, maybe there's even a pointer on here. Doesn't work on the screen, yeah. So the cafeteria is just above that orange area, and we're going to have a glass wall between those two spaces. And you'll be able to see as you come in the front door, see right out through to the south and into the courtyard there. So it's going to transform and open up that, the first sort of impression of the school as you come in. as you come in. Also in that, can you back up again, Adam? Yeah. Also in that area, to the south, there's a, there's an existing computer lab, or right, right where we're making it is a computer lab. We're going to move that across the hall to where the, the vice principal's offices are, and we're going to move those into the green area. So we're kind of recombining the administration functions and also creating a new entry vestibule and a sort of better welcoming, secure front entry that you'll see in a, in an image in one second here. And then the yellow area is the, we're moving from building 300, which is that building that's just below the auto building. All the spaces that are in there are being rebuilt in that yellow cluster there, which is partly an addition and partly a remodeling of spaces that are business classrooms right now. So super excited about all those projects. We're also thinking about an elevator in the center of the school in the green area. Adam, you want to go to the next slide? So upstairs, much more minor renovations, but we do anticipate the green area, again, as you go up, there's the elevator that'll connect those two things. But we also imagine opening the library up a bit. As you come up the top of the stairs, the library's in a great location. It's got a fantastic view out to the north hills, and it's kind of cut off by this diagonal wall that was put in as an addition at some point during the school. And we're going to open that up, make that wall more glass, and create a little bit more of an eddy at the top of the stairs so that it's not quite as much of a just bust buy it, make the library a more part of the school. And if money allows, the purple area on the, on the side of the left is the pep band, little place that you overlook the gym. It's open to the gym right now, and we imagine walling it off with a glass wall to the gym and opening it to the corridor and making it into a great little common space. So excited about that project, really hoping to find the resources to make that happen. So this is a quick little video. Let's see if it plays. But you're in the, in the parking lot, and this is the new band orchestra room that we're kind of zooming by as we go around. You can see the, the existing wall with Sentinel High School. We're not taking the ivy down, we just didn't model it. And our, we, we like how the building looks right now, and we're trying to be really sensitive to keeping the south facade pretty similar, and our, our volume kind of sits back a little bit from it. So as you come in here, you can see that there's a new vestibule with a welcoming window right there that you go by. We're imagining some improvements in this area here. And then we're kind of going to look back at this, the new admin, totally transparent and open to the, to the commons. We want to bring some new color in. I'm not sure it's brilliant orange yet, but we want to bring some warm color into this space and some natural textures. We've got some wood in there, but you can see, looking through to the cafeteria behind. And these will be places where art and student work is, is in these volumes, orange volumes on either end. So that was a quick, sort of zippy through video about what that front entry experience will look like. And I have a couple other images that, so I'm going to just skip us to the next one. But, so this is the STEM center. So we're in the pickleball court right now, and we're kind of looking back toward, toward the school. The wood shop is on the left, and the spaces over on the right are three new class spaces opening on to a maker space. So we have the idea that things like the robotics club that Marina was mentioning earlier will come and build their, their robotics projects out in this space, and they have access both to all of the, the gear that Dan and other folks have in their classrooms, but also access to the wood shop and welding shop right across the hall. Whoops. Did I do that? So that, that's all right. So this, this is just a static image of what you saw as we, as we flew through, and another static image showing what those common spaces will look like. So the last, the last image that I wanted to show was just talk a little bit about the site. And we, we have heard quite a few things about the security concerns, safety concerns about accessing across South Avenue at the Bow Street intersection, right where that little tiny blue square is essentially. And so we know the one on the north side of the school. There you go, right up there. So we've been looking at improvements up there, and we've been trying to balance, you know, the, the money is always tight, and we're trying to get the best value for the school every time. And we've, we've kind of got a bucket of money that we've allocated for the site, and we've been, we've been sort of inching our way toward taking a lot of that resource to making safety improvements at the perimeter and ADA improvements at the perimeter, rather than a major upgrade to the parking lot. So I think that's the right decision in terms of overall safety and, and the best use of the resources. So that, that's a super quick buzz through. The one other thing I would mention is that it's exciting that Ben Cummins has kind of taken lead on the lead part of the project. We are doing a, what's called lead arc for Sentinel, which is, used to be called a lead dynamic plaque. But Sentinel now has this, and our filling out information, it's something that you put on a screen like this in your school and shows your use of, of energy, water, your waste management, your transportation, and your overall satisfaction of the use of the space. So that data's already being collected, and I think that very quickly that will be up and running, and will give a good platform for the school to think about sustainability issues as it goes forward.
Thank you. Any questions? Trustee Lorenzen, then trustee McDonald?
So we're looking at this, will we still be using modulators at Sentinel off to the west?
So help me understand which modulators you're talking about.
Don't we know, aren't there now classrooms?
So we, so we are, the, the white volume there, if you go from the new gym, I mean, you kind of keep going west, there's building 500, which Mark is pointing to right there. We are continuing to use some space in building 500. So the original intention was to move as many of the spaces in satellite buildings into the main school as we could. That's still our intention. It made sense to us to not try to do that with automotive. Automotive serves the whole district, and it's a little bit different kind of program, and the space seemed like it was working, made sense to do in building 400. Building 500, we got to the point of just not having enough money, frankly, to recreate those teaching spaces that are in building 500 on campus. So that was a kind of a decision about how do we maximize value and still provide enough flexibility for, for the Sentinel to schedule their classes.
On that, that new outbuilding that you, that you were showing that was going to be in the park, it was going to take up some of the parking lot?
So the, the addition that I showed, so there, yeah. Thanks, Vanna. So the, right in there is kind of a service courtyard, and it's actually, it's not very heavily used. I hope, I hope nobody has it.
Oh, okay. I thought that, that you said that you were going to take that in the parking lot, so I was just, my next question was, how many parking spaces is that going to take away?
None in there. It, you know, it's a service courtyard, basically, there, all the utilities come through there. And it, you know, it's occasionally used for things, people bringing big materials into wood shop and whatnot. The STEM center, I didn't really call this out, but the STEM center, that maker lab is actually designed with big roll-up doors with the idea that you could drive large vehicles all the way back in there and bring materials right to the wood shop anyway. So we're going to try to keep most of the utility and, and create this cool new dynamic space for, for learning.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. I just want to add to what Diane was asking about. So 500, we're going to continue to use, 400 is still going to be the automotive. That one that is currently the band in music is, you said they're moving up by the, the drama area. Is, are we going to still use that building, or is that?
So Sentinel is not. You know, our intention with the, with our scope of work is that we're going to essentially close the door and, and walk away from it. We're going to do a little more than that to make sure that it's heated, but, but that's about it, and then the district can, can find another future for it, but not as part of this project.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Don?
So the one other thing I neglected to mention is just that there is going to be new cooling and heating for the entire building, except for the part of the building that has the white roof that was rebuilt in 2002. So that part has an adequate system right now that, that can heat and cool it, but the rest of the building will be getting new heating and cooling. And that will no doubt be good. Hopefully the, hopefully the transition won't be as tough as Hellgate's transition. And the other, the, the one last slide, if, if someone, maybe I can move it. I don't know, I was just going to give an overview of the, of the timeline that we're, we're in the final push of our construction documents. We imagine being done right around April, beginning of April. And we've been, as Burley said before, Langless has, has been brought on board. We've been working with them over the last few months, and they're really starting to put a big push into developing both phasing plans of how the construction's going to go and also verifying the budgets. You know, earlier budgets looked like we were on target with our project, and, but it's super volatile pricing at the moment, so we're always, you know, wanting to see what the latest is every time. The idea would be starting construction yet this spring and working as fast as possible with the idea of getting done early in the year 2020.
Thanks. On one of the early slides, you mentioned sort of classroom upgrades to improve functionality or something like that. And that, to me, sounds like classrooms in general are getting some amount of touch or some amount of impact. Is there like facelifting, or is it that mostly a heating cooling thing? What's going to be the impact to kind of everyone in the building?
Yeah. So the, the biggest impact to everyone in the building is the heating cooling thing. We're doing, you know, there, at the end of the day, we're going to have, I think, one more teaching space than we have right now, but a number of them are better than the old ones were. You know, some of the ones that came out of building 400 were kind of crummy and had to walk through each other and stuff. So there's kind of an overall slight upgrade of teaching spaces and sometimes big upgrades. So there's a, there's a little bit happening there. And of course, the, there's, you know, some new adjacencies that just make a ton of sense that we're creating. The STEM center's going to be cool with five or six teachers clustered around that maker space, and then having the, the performing arts space clustered around the theater is also awesome. So I think it's going to be a great improvement and excited to see it move forward.
All right. Any public comment? Well, thanks for being here tonight and to the crew back there from, I can almost see the crew over the podium. But anyway, thank you so much for being here, and thank you for the update. It looks quite exciting. Now we move on to 9A2, which is authorize engagement of a professional commercial real estate broker consultant for the district. And I understand, Pat, you've kind of walked us through what the request is from the administration.
So the, we operated a request for qualifications for professional services relating to real estate consultants, broker type services. This was an IDIQ process, much like we did with the engineering firms, indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity. And so we had four submittals and are recommending the selection of, of the four firms that, that submitted in response to our RFQ. So we're asking that the board authorize the selection of these four firms. As an IDIQ, we're not identifying any specific work at this point in time, but the firms would then be available at the point in time when the, the board would authorize moving forward with the real estate project.
Any questions for Pat? Trustee Smith?
Thanks. Pat, could you just kind of touch on the type of work we're going to have these guys do? Is it appraisal work, or is it market analysis? Both, or just to, just to give us a feel of what they were going to do? And also could then, I don't know if you have an answer to this one, but do we just rotate through them, or do some of them have specialties? Is, is there a process to pick them, or?
Yeah, I, I think the, the process for selection will depend a little bit upon the submittals because we did ask for some pricing information, so there is some better pricing in, with, with some services. And the type of work, as you mentioned, yeah, the, we're not looking for appraisal services, but there was one company that does provide appraisal services. The RFQ is drafted for more, look, for looking at consulting, real estate strategy. It will involve some valuation, cost market type valuation. I could also see some rental type valuation. We had Mount Jumbo School rented for some time, and I think, you know, we could engage professional services to, to provide better information to, to you as a board in terms of rental or lease value, that type of thing. So I, I think that it, it would go beyond just the listing and, and type services that you typically see with the real estate brokers. And hopefully, when the board asks questions, by having these professionals available and, and having done some research and due diligence, they could respond to questions the board might have about value, about strategy, that type of thing, marketability.
Okay, great. And that's, 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 that's exactly what I was looking for, and I'm excited to move forward with this process. Do we, and you mentioned listing, and if it gets to that point, do, are we, do we have any agreements to use them for listing, or is that just a different process completely?
These, these firms would be available for that
Okay.
...service as well if we get to that point, most definitely.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Any other questions? Trustee Lorenzen?
So would these firms be compensated by P, fees for professional service, or would they rely on commissions from sales?
I would say both. It would depend on the circumstances of the professional services. We asked for the, the firms to identify the compensation, and, and much of the sale type work and purchase type work is, is commission based. And then the, the other work could be done on a professional service fee basis. And at the point in, in engaging them, that's when we'd talk about what those fees might look like for professional services. So it could be both, if that answers the question.
Any other questions for Pat?
I have one just related to Diane. So what would be the funding source, if it's not commission based, for the professional fees?
You know, we would most likely look at a, a number of sources of, of funding. So if we, or a variety, I should say, if we were looking at advice or consulting services related to the lease of Mount Jumbo, for instance, I could see using some of the rental proceeds we have from that. If, and even looking at other services, I could see using that type of rental proceeds in, in, in paying for those services. There, the, the translation between the property that generates some revenue and then using the rent of revenue as an expense to evaluate property makes sense to me.
Any other questions? This is an action item, so if there are any questions, is there a motion? This is an action item. So if there are any questions, is there a motion to authorize the engagement of the four firms as identified in the agenda on an ad needed basis under the general terms that Pat has described for professional commercial real estate services? Moved by trustee Wade. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Breckstad. Is there any board discussion? Trustee Lorenzen?
Well, I remain opposed to this. I think that this decision to engage professional commercial real estate brokers blows right past the board's needed conversation, which is, are we willing to sell public land, open space to private developers if the price is right? I don't think we've had that conversation. I don't think having a fee structure that's both commission and fees protects the district from getting sort of railroaded into a sale without having actually discussed the issues of open space, the issues of public trust, the issues of land. You know, I'm afraid we'll get sort of blinders on about how to get rid of buildings and accidentally get rid of the land in the process. I think there's huge caution here based on what happened with the university when they thought a piece of land is worth a certain amount, got their house, their heart set on selling it, and then it didn't work out. So I just think we're premature on this. I think it sends a message that things are for sale that we haven't actually actively decided are for sale. And I think that Missoula's open space community needs to hear us say, you know, we're willing to part with open space if the price is right. And I don't think we've had that conversation. So I remain opposed to going down this road at this time.
Thanks. Trustee Smith?
I think Diane brings up a good point. I think, while I think that this is a good time to begin this process, I do agree with, and I will vote for this, because I think that knowing the values of our assets is important when we do have those discussions. And I hope that this does lead to those discussions. And I hope that the fact that Diane and the rest of us are sensitive to those issues, that it makes us talk about them. Because as Diane said, we should be talking about that. And hopefully, we come to the right decision as a board. But I think that this is important to know what we're talking about because I think that's one of the problems that Diane mentioned. But the university, if we don't know kind of the values, the markets, the potential clients, all potential clients, whether it be open space or developers or everything in between, that I hope that, and I think that this will lead to a good discussion on all these properties. And I also think that when we get to that discussion, we can, you know, I mean, there's different philosophies and all that. Some people think that it's important to use the assets to keep our taxes down and stuff like that. But as I said, I think that discussion is coming. And I hope we do have that as we move forward. And it looks like we are, we will. So I'm confident that we will do that.
Any other board discussion? Trustee Decker?
Well said, Mike. I think it's important that people understand that this is not a decision to move forward with any particular pathway for any particular piece of property. I think information is good. I think the question about how these services are being paid for in the short term is really important, and I'm glad that was addressed. But in the long term, I think if we have good information, then we can decide how to proceed for the best possible trust for the public good. I mean, as trustees, we hold all of, we're trying to figure out how to make these decisions. And so this doesn't preclude the opportunity to have exactly those conversations.
Any other board discussion? I'll just add a short one, which somewhat piggybacks on trustee Decker. I'm pretty confident that based on the makeup of this board and the dedication of its trustees, that before any decision was made, there would be a very robust discussion about anything. But I agree that more information is better than less information. And in fact, learning from other entities in the community that went with less information first, I appreciate getting more rather than less before we even contemplate a discussion, much less a decision. So. Any other comments? Any public comment? Seeing none, then we have a second motion to authorize the engagement of four professional commercial real estate brokers and consultants for the district as identified in the agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is all trustees present except trustee McDonald and trustee Lorenzen, if I've got that right. Just make sure at the very end of the table. Okay? And all those opposed, trustee McDonald and trustee Lorenzen. So the motion carries. And now we will move on to item A3, which is a real estate market analysis. As you can see in the agenda, this is an information only item at this stage of the administration's planning. So Superintendent Thane, do you want to explain why this, what the, that's our office?
Certainly. And I appreciated Pat McHugh's comments that, on the previous agenda item, that at this point in time, we weren't taking specific action with regard to any properties. Now, what I'd like to suggest is, given the approval of the four firms on the IDIQ list, we would like to enter into discussions, to engage them, to determine what the potential valuation, market value might be of four district held properties. Just by way of explanation, I think it's really important that we do have a full and robust conversation at this board level with regard to the disposition of any properties. The intent here is simply to ask those professionals that we've identified to review those properties, give us a sense of what their value would be, so that we can come to the board and have conversation about whether or not we wish to consider marketing any of those properties. The four that I've identified in the background information are the property that we hold at 55th and Whittaker, which is up essentially to the west of Shadows Keep at the top of the hill. There's property in Linda Vista that is adjacent to Maryland Park. We reviewed it and determined it not suitable for a school site when we were looking at Jeanette Rankin Elementary. There's the property directly across the street that we refer to as Casa Loma and Home Vale. And then I included on the list the Sixth Street Administration Building. And the reason for inclusion of that building is we have recently, as you know, acquired the Missoula College property. I've long held that you don't ever divest yourself of a capital asset unless you're intending to reinvest that in a capital asset. And as we know, there's significant work that needs to be completed at the Missoula College, former Missoula College building, before we occupy it. So that's an identified need. And the intent in looking at the potential to market any of these properties would be to generate some revenue that could be reinvested in a capital asset, the Missoula College building, so that we could occupy it and make full utilization of that site. We do have some money, as Pat referenced previously, in the building fund and in some rental proceeds. We know that the buildings on this campus that we intend to occupy for our business function and our administrative functions need a great deal of work before we do inhabit them. So the intent at this point in time is just simply to gather information that we can use for that conversation at the board level, determine whether or not there is interest on the part of the board in considering marketing any of those properties, and ultimately a discussion at the board level of whether there's interest in reinvesting any potential proceeds in the former Missoula College facility.
With that information, are there any questions of Superintendent Thane? Trustee Lorenzen?
So our paperwork says that we'll do a market analysis, that the implication is sale. Will this realtor also look at long-term lease of land and of buildings, the building at Sixth Street, or other types of things that would keep the public property in school ownership rather than just sell it?
We certainly could request both of those pieces of information. You know, I think that our future use of any of these properties, or if we were to choose to dispose of those properties, is fully at the discretion of the board. So we would entertain that conversation. And that is information that we would bring back to the board.
I'm not very familiar with what a market analysis includes. Can you explain that to us?
Sure. And I would also reference, we have actually had this done on a few other parcels by a commercial realtor previously. For example, the parcel that we acquired that's between Hellgate High School and the Sparkle Laundry, prior to entering into negotiations, we had a market analysis done. They do comparables, look at what property's going for on a square foot basis in those areas of town, so that you have some understanding of the potential value of the parcel. We also, at one point in time in the Smart Schools 2020, took a look at the current Willard property and had a market analysis done, just to come to an understanding of what the highest best use of that property might be, and if we were to determine to locate the Willard Alternative High School at a different site, what could we generate from the potential sale of that property. So this is not uncommon, and it does not necessarily mean that we're obligated to actually market something. But it's just simply looking at the current state of the real estate market in Missoula, looking at the location, taking into account comparable sales in the area or sales of similar properties, given size, given the attributes that they have. What would we reasonably expect might be generated from a parcel, whether it be lease or sale. And I might mention with regard to the Home Vale property, we actually had an assessment done previously on that property, not an assessment, but an analysis done to determine what its value was as parking for the former Missoula College students who utilized it, so that we could assess whether or not there was some revenue generating opportunity there.
Trustee Decker, or trustee Smith, and then trustee Decker?
Thanks. In light of some of the discussions we've had on the other item that was brought up too, I think, Mark, if you could kind of touch on, you mentioned, you know, highest and best use and potential sale and costs and that. And I want to make sure that we, as we just said a few minutes ago, that we keep in the discussion, not necessarily just sale, but as Diane mentioned, potential open space and land leasing and that. So I guess I want to just make sure and emphasize the point that we are conscious and we are, with this market analysis, this isn't the first step to a sale. I think this is the first step to a discussion of the ultimate disposition of these properties and ultimately the best for not only the district, but for, I think, the city. And to include those, you know, we can get some input from other stakeholders at the table when we have those discussions. So I just want to make sure that it's clear that if we get a market analysis, I mean, we've had market analysis and we haven't sold properties. So it's not a foregone conclusion that the next step after a market analysis is the sale. And I don't know if this is the appropriate place to do it, but I want to kind of lock in that discussion. I know that Marcia and you, Mark, have already said that, you know, we will talk about it, but I don't know how to get that on the calendar, or maybe just bringing it up now and making sure that we do talk about it is good enough at this point. But I guess I just wanted to emphasize that. And if you have anything to add to that, Mark, you can. But that's more of a comment, I think, than a question.
The only thing I would add is, there are statutory requirements before this board could ever dispose of any real estate and property. And so there will be a full discussion at the board level prior to any actions, any decisions being made.
Often, more, or more often than you would think, a market analysis gives pause to selling property. And I think, I just want to say that comment now, after sitting here and sort of processing what everybody else has said, because it, having that information is going to be quintessential to any ultimate decision that we make about property. And I would also add to, just my personal opinion about the market in Missoula in general, from the 30,000-foot point of view, it's expensive, right? We all know that. And so now, I think, is a really good time to understand what the value of the properties are that the system holds. And again, just as much to inform any reason not to sell or not to lease as to do the same.
Trustee Decker?
I was just curious about the bringing into the district of these properties. I know we've talked in the past about one of them having been a donation at some point. And just curious as to whether others were donated as well, I guess, where they came from.
Yeah, so the Home Vale property across the street was a part purchase, part donation over time. I believe the Maryland Park property may have been a donation. And I believe that 55th was a purchase some time ago. Mark and I dusted off a box of old files that have some pretty interesting information. I was going to add too, if it's all right, just in reference to Mark's comment about the use of the cost market analysis, we have the Willard property, which is an elementary property. And with the improvement of that property using high school proceeds, we're wanting to convey that property to the high school. And in doing so, also recognize that value is an elementary asset. And in looking at the Home Vale property, which is a high school owned asset, I want to have that information to bring to you to sort of identify what would equivalent value would be in an exchange, so that the elementary owned asset, you know, whether you recognize the value or not, but it may be worthwhile at least to look at what might be a fair ownership interest in the elementary and home vale if the Willard property was conveyed in part to the high school, so that that property is owned by the high school. And I think that, that's a broader discussion, but I think it's just part of the information that might be useful to you guys as trustees in having that type of information.
Any other board comments? This is information only. So this is the one opportunity for discussion at this stage. Seeing none. As I indicated, this is information only, but if there's any public comment, seeing none. Thank you for providing the information to us, Superintendent Thane. And we'll move on to number four, which is an elementary action item, which is to grant permission to solicit requests for qualifications of a general contractor and construction manager for Meadow Hill Middle School. So as most trustees now are well aware of the process, this is the process that we have been using for all board projects to identify who will be identified for the general contractor and construction manager. And this time is with respect to the renovation, remodel, expansion of Meadow Hill Middle School. So Burley, is there anything to add about this process that might be different than what we have considered in past?
The process is exactly the same. We do an RFQ process, qualify the contractors for the project. And then we have those same contractors that were qualified submit an RFP. And then we select up to four contractors, come back in for an interview to ultimately select a contractor for the project. I do apologize to the board, this got left off the agenda last board meeting, so this is a little retroactive, where we've qualified these contractors already. And we'll actually be screening RFPs tomorrow. So I do apologize to the board, we left that off the agenda last meeting, so this is a little retroactive. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Burley? Seeing none, then the recommendation is to grant the administration permission to issue requests for qualifications for general contractors and construction manager services associated with what's going to be happening at Meadow Hill Middle School. And as I indicated, it's an elementary action item. So is there a motion by an elementary trustee? Moved by trustee McDonald. Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all elementary trustees in favor of granting permission to issue the requests for qualifications for the general GCCM, General Contractor Construction Manager in connection with Meadow Hill Middle School, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present. Then we move on to number five. And I'm going to break this out a little bit, since it involves both elementary properties and one high school property. So first, and one high school property. So first, I would consider a motion, unless there are questions, I guess Ray can explain generally what the request is, and then I'll entertain a motion for the elementary properties and then for the high school properties. So it would be two separate motions, just to make sure we're not having everyone vote on some things that they can't vote on. So Ray, want to get?
Good evening. I come before you today to ask permission to solicit bids to install new wiring, the same things that have happened previously with the Smart Schools 2020 plan for four schools. So it's Jeanette Rankin Elementary, Russell Elementary, Washington Middle School, and then Willard Alternative High School.
So as Ray's indicated, we've seen similar requests for this type of project with many, or virtually all of the projects that we have taken on. Are there any questions of Ray before I ask for a motion on the elementary side? Trustee, oh, trustee Lorenzen?
I guess, and this may be for Burley, I don't remember being asked for wiring separate from the other remodel. So is this just computer-based wiring, or is this the entire electrical system?
Yeah, this is computer-based wiring. So this is for all the data dropping, all the data drops and that stuff to get in the building.
Any other questions? Trustee Smith?
I guess, along with Diane's question, and this could be for either of you, so is the reason, or maybe it's for Pat, is the reason that we have it separate from the actual construction so that we can use different funds, like the tech or the E, what's that called, the E rate?
That's correct, Mike. Yeah. So the previous requests and then bidding process and ultimate contract provided for an expenditure by a particular date, also to be in compliance with E rate. So this second plan is to accommodate the bidding requirements of E rate. So that's correct.
And is this something that is already, like, pre-approved through the E rate program, or is this one of those things that we have to come back later and ask for it after the fact?
Well, it's, as a board, you'll approve the selection, as you always have, but it'll follow the procurement.
Because it always comes later on, right?
In the same way, yeah. And the dates are just more of a matter of compliance with E rate funding purposes.
Okay, that's what I thought. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Questions of anybody? Burley, Pat, Ray? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to grant permission to solicit bids to install new internal wiring that has to do with computer wiring at Jeanette Rankin Elementary, Russell Elementary, and Washington Middle School? And that would be an elementary action item? Moved by trustee McDonald. Is there a second? Second by trustee Lorenzen. Is there any board discussion on the motion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all elementary trustees in favor of the motion to grant permission to solicit bids for the schools that were identified to install new internal wiring, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to elementary trustees. And then we move on to the Willard Alternative High School, which is also to request permission to solicit bids to install new internal wiring. Is there a motion to grant permission to solicit bids? Moved by trustee Wake. Is there a second? Second by trustee Breckstad, I think. Is there any board discussion on this motion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of granting permission to solicit bids to install new internal wiring at Willard Alternative High School, as outlined in the Smart Schools 2020 plan, please indicate by raising your hand. And that is unanimous as to all trustees present. Thank you for that. Now we move on to the personnel report. This is an item that we see on a regular basis, usually each month, and so it doesn't identify the term of the personnel report. So Dave, what period of time does it cover? I mean, it doesn't, in our...
I'm sorry, that would have been for the month of December.
Okay, so this is for the month of December.
2017.
Anything unusual that stands?
No, it's actually an extremely small report this month.
Okay. So any questions for Dave before there's a motion? Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the items on the personnel report found on page 28? Moved by trustee Smith, and seconded by trustee Breckstad. And we typically don't have any board discussion on specific information in the personnel report, but if there's any general board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none. Then all trustees in favor of approving the items on the personnel report for December, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present, which are all trustees. And then we move on to B2, which is to approve the voting direction for Montana High School Association annual meeting proposals. And Nick Latchey, Latch couldn't be here because there are so many activities going on, so Superintendent Thane is going to walk us through this. For those trustees who have served before, this is something that happens, that the board is asked to make recommendations to allow our representatives who are going to the meeting, you know, to vote in a certain fashion. So if you want to walk us through...
Thank you. First of all, Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 15th is the date for the Montana High School Association annual meeting, and we will be represented as a district. And there are two proposals to be considered and voted on by the administrators in attendance. The first, you'll note, was presented by a group of Class C schools, Fromberg, Ennis, Manhattan Christian. And it's always interesting when these types of proposals come before us, because we're an interesting district in that we have three Class AA high schools and one Class C high school. So we don't have consistent response with regard to the first proposal. The first proposal is to make amendments to the exceptions that allow eighth-grade students to participate in high school athletics. It does not consume a year of the eligibility, so an eighth grader who participates as an eighth grader would still retain four years of eligibility once matriculating to high school. Right now, you can see that the bylaws reference specifically high school volleyball, track relays, and basketball teams. In a situation where a district wants eighth graders to participate, the Board of Trustees in that district must approve participation, and then that request goes on to the Montana High School Association for final approval. Those Class C schools that I mentioned previously have asked that consideration be given to expanding eighth-grade participation to individual sports, which would include cross-country, golf, wrestling, track and field, tennis, and swimming. What's interesting about this is the rationale for passing the original change to the bylaws was so that small Class C schools with declining enrollment would not find themselves in a position of being unable to field a team to participate in the team sports. It was never a consideration with the original proposal to allow individual participation in individual sports. So this is a request for a fairly significant expansion. I suspect, quite honestly, that it'll garner a fair amount of support among Class C schools. The AA schools, or the AA school representatives from MCPS would like to vote no, while the Sealy vote would like to be a yes vote. So we're a mixed bag. But I would like to ask your permission to allow them to vote accordingly. The second proposal, it is an amendment to fines that are levied by the High School Association. And generally, these are associated with reprimands for violation of NHSA rules and regulations. The current levels for fines range from, actually, there are three levels, $50, $100, and $200. The request is to essentially double the fine structure to $100, $200, and $400, and all of our athletic department representatives are unanimously in support of that measure. So they're just looking for affirmation as they head to Bozeman for the High School Association meeting, so that they can cast their votes.
Can I ask one question, just on language? Track relay and/or in both 5-1, A and B are stricken out. Is that, because you suggested that those are currently permitted.
That's true. The overstrike is a change that they would like to see made. They would eliminate the reference to track relays, and then in the language below, it would include track and field in general.
Okay, yes. Thank you. It just seemed confusing to me. Trustee Newbold, you had a question?
So with respect to the first proposal, what is the rationale for the expansion?
I believe it's just about opportunities for students. You know, you get to some of the small schools, and you might find you have only a couple, or three, or four students who are out for a sport, and to build a team, I think they're looking at enhancing participation. You know, it's an interesting dilemma, because in cross-country, you need a certain number of runners to score, for example. However, if you have fewer than the number of runners that are necessary to score, you can still participate, but you might just come out with a no score. So it doesn't change the opportunity for high school students to participate. What it does is it would change the opportunity for that school to have a team score. And that's basically the reason that the AA, and I think this is fairly consistent across the state, the AA administrators are not in favor of the proposal, because it doesn't do anything that, or lack of passage does not do anything to inhibit high school students from participation. And they supported the previous proposal because it did make headway in allowing all high schools to field teams. So it's a slight nuance there.
Trustee Decker?
This doesn't require MCPS to allow eighth graders to participate in these activities, however, because it says that it would still have to be approved locally. So it makes it possible statewide, but each district still gets discretion vis a vis their own school and their own programs.
That's correct. The Board of Trustees would need to approve a request for eighth-grade participation in each district where it's requested, and then it would need to be approved by the High School Association, much as is the process right now when we have cooperative agreements. For example, we have a cooperative agreement in swimming with Big Sky and Loyal of Sacred Heart. Loyal of Sacred Heart didn't have an opportunity to put together a swim program, so those students co-op with MCPS.
I'm sorry, any other questions? I have a question just about how they anticipate this to work. So that eighth-grade students, just hypothetically, if you're talking about Sealy, the eighth-grade students are not our students. And so the Sealy Swan Elementary School District may want to keep their eighth-grade students on their teams, because that may enhance whatever middle school team they've got. So how can MCPS override the wishes of the Board of Trustees that actually supervises the actual students that, I mean, you know, that the high school team wants to take from the elementary school? I'm concerned about the legality of how, who should be making those decisions?
I would take that even one step further and say that one of the requirements we have for participation on all our athletic teams are that students need to comply with our code of conduct, and they need to meet our academic requirements. If we were to have eighth graders in any of our feeder districts, and Sealy Swan Elementary, or Sealy Lake Elementary would be a fine example, we, as a high school district, because of Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, don't have access to those records on the students. So it puts you in a real difficult position, quite honestly. If you're a unified K-12 district, it might make more sense, but that's not the case in MCPS.
So how many representatives does MCPS have that go to this meeting?
We are entitled to four, one vote for each of our high schools.
And was there a question down that way?
Actually, I think I'm, we haven't had a motion yet, right? I think I'm more in the discussion end of things. I'll wait. I'll wait. I'm more in the discussion end of things.
I guess, that's just my second question. The last time this came up, the decision was to let each of those high school representatives vote in the way that their school would want to vote, so we would possibly have three votes, four and one vote against, or two and two. I'm just concerned how this can be enforced when the eighth-grade students at Sealy aren't our students. Do you know if that's ever been discussed by Montana High School NHSA?
Quite honestly, I don't know if that's been discussed. You know, what you could do essentially is ask an eighth-grade student to provide documentations like a current grade report or current discipline report from the school. But again, we have no way as a school of securing that or doing the routine grade checks that we do prior to determining eligibility. I also, again, my sense is, there are a lot more Class C votes out there than there are AA votes. Wouldn't surprise me to see something like this pass at the High School Association meeting. If it does, then we would have a discussion at the time that it became necessary, if that were a question for MCPS. And we would have to address those specific concerns with any of our feeder schools who would be considered for participation. Marcia raised the point earlier about students participating on their middle school teams, and the High School Association would prohibit you from concurrently participating on both your middle school and your high school teams. If the middle school season has concluded, a student could, in theory, participate at the middle school level and then participate at the high school level. But again, it becomes a management question.
Trustee Decker, and then I have a poll.
Is there any amount of concern that eighth graders in MCPS, who are athletically gifted in some way, would want to take advantage of this change to compete at the high school level when they're in eighth grade? Is that something that we would anticipate, and would that be a problem?
I think that's one of the main reasons that the AA athletic directors would vote no. They don't want to have to face such a question. And we would not, because of our numbers, want to find that there would be gifted eighth graders who are displacing high school students from having an opportunity to participate.
And if I can ask one, oh, trustee Lorenzen?
So trustee Decker brings up an interesting point. Let's say we have a gifted eighth-grader in Missoula who would like to play on the Sealy Swan High School team, probably has no intention of ever going to Sealy Swan High School. So now we have that situation too, which I guess nothing we can do about it, but it's all out there. There's some crazy parents out there.
I would suspect that the High School Association would also have to weigh in on such a request.
And remind me, I vaguely remember a conversation about when eighth graders somehow are taking high school classes or otherwise participating in high school sports. Does that impact eligibility for their high school years? I don't know.
We actually have had conversation with the High School Association about that, and there's essentially a workaround to that. So an eighth grader who accrues high school credit does not necessarily sacrifice eligibility.
Okay, that's what I remember. Any other questions before I entertain a motion? I think we'll take one more. Okay, trustee Breckstad?
Yeah, I have a question about, so if we have schools or sport programs in our AA districts that are struggling to get numbers, to get enough students, wouldn't this benefit them? Would they be able to then seek out eighth graders? And couldn't, I mean, not seek out eighth graders, but I mean, expand their teams through that way?
You know, I'm kind of getting into the weeds here and speculating, but I think when the High School Association were to evaluate a request, they would likely look, just as they do when we have cooperative agreement requests, at the number of students that are enrolled in the school who would be eligible for participation. So if you've got a school of 1,200 students, and you can't find five people to be on a basketball team, it's not a problem that would require you to go out and recruit in the eighth grades. You'd have to go out and recruit within your own building. I think the High School Association would be hard-pressed, in all likelihood, to approve such a request.
Trustee Smith?
Can I follow that? And the way that you answered that question just gave me pause, because I understand that what this is saying is, we as a board would have to approve it. But are you also saying that NHSA would approve it on a per-school, per-sport, or per-student basis? Oh, okay. So there'd be... Okay, I'll stop.
We're the initial gatekeepers, but the High School Association would also have to vote in favor.
Any other questions? Any other questions? So I leave it up to the trustees in terms of voting on section five and ten, since they're related, the language in section ten is just assuming that the language in section five is adopted on the first proposal to amend eighth grade participation and academic transfer bylaws. And so in the past, there's been a motion to oppose it. There's been another time there was a motion to let each of the representatives vote the way their schools want to. I leave it open to however the person who makes the motion wants to word it. Trustee Lorenzen?
I move that we allow the representatives who attend the meeting to vote as they, they choose themselves.
Is there a second? Second by trustee Decker, because I just saw her hand go up first. Is there any, now there's time for board discussion? Trustee Smith?
Well, I, I just want to say that I, I, I'm sort of sympathetic to the issue that this is attempting to deal with. I just think it's a, it's a, it's a horrible solution to what is actually a problem, and if this is the best that the MHSA could do, I, I don't think that they're thinking outside the box. And I'm, I haven't looked at this issue, you know, I mean, there's, I, I just think that there's a whole bunch more questions that I don't think have been asked, and, and different ways to do it, different rules for different classes would be fine with me. If you, for instance, cross-country, I've seen no problem with having boys and girls run on the same team. I, I, I mean, I'm just saying that I don't think that this is the solution that fits this problem. So I, and the, if, if the, and a question following based on, so Diane's motion was to let the people go forward. So if I vote against that, am I telling them to vote for it or against it? Little volume.
I'm sorry, to let them vote in the manner in which the individual representatives want to vote? If that motion doesn't pass, then we'd have to entertain a different motion. So first, we have to act on the motion that's on the table.
All right.
And then depending on the action taken on that motion, it either passes and no further action is needed, or it doesn't, and further action is needed.
Okay, then I'll just finish up with saying that based on, on that comment, I'm going to vote against this.
Trustee Lorenzen?
I, the reason I want us to let the Sealy Lake trustee make their own vote, and all of our trustees, I don't want us to be heavy-handed with Sealy Lake. I think it's wonderful that they're part of MCPS, but there's probably always people thinking, should we really be a K-12 up here? And so I don't want us to put this in the column of, maybe we'd be better off as a K-12, because I think having, having Sealy as part of our nine-twelve district is wonderful. So I don't want to get heavy-handed with the Sealy Lake representative.
Any other board discussion? I just have one comment, just, I think in part to clarify what trustee Smith said. Ennis Fromberg and Manhattan Christian High Schools are the generators of this proposal. Sealy Lake is not, and it's not clear, because there's no background information, whether the representatives from Ennis Fromberg and Manhattan Christian High Schools thought about some of the problems that we've discussed here tonight and have a ready solution to them, especially when there's, you know, cross-referencing different districts in between elementary and high school. So since, you know, Sealy Swan is not one of the smaller schools moving to have this proposal happen, I, and because of what I see, a lot of legal problems with this, I would not vote for the motion, but that's my opinion.
I, I, and we're making the assumption that the Sealy Lake, and Elliot, I don't know if it's your decision or if you've talked to other people or what. Okay, never mind, thank you. And, and not to be curt, but, but that, that was going to be my point, Elliot, thank you. But it's, it's not a, it's not a given that, 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 you know, and I appreciate your, your candor in that. Thank you.
Any other board discussion? We have a motion on the floor? Any public comment on the motion? Seeing none, then all trustees in favor of the motion to allow each of the four representatives from MCPS vote in whatever way they feel is appropriate on these two proposed changes to section five and section ten, please indicate by raising your hand. And that's trustee Beers and trustee Breakstead and trustee Lorenzen, trustee Decker, trustee Kendall, and trustee Newbold. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, and those opposed? And that is trustee Smith, trustee McDonald, trustee Holland, trustee Duggar, and trustee Wake. And so the motion carries. So now we move on to number two, which is to modify the fines to allow them to be increased in fairly insubstantial manners, since apparently they were first set in.
It was my understanding from previous motions that they were to go and vote their conscience. Is that to cover both items or just a single item?
No, we were doing the first one.
Okay.
Now we're doing the second one, since it wasn't clear that there would be the same positions taken. So the second one is two, which is the proposal to amend fines up from fifty to a hundred dollars, fifty to a hundred dollars, one hundred to two hundred dollars, and two hundred to four hundred dollars. And as I understand it, all four of our representatives are in favor of that. So is there any questions for superintendent Thane on this one? Is there any motion a trustee would like to make? Trustee Smith?
I move that we vote to approve that amendment.
To authorize our representatives?
To authorize our representatives to vote to approve the amendment.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by trustee Duggar. Is there any board discussion? Seeing none. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, then all in favor of the motion on the table to allow the fines to be amended, please indicate by raising your hand. It is unanimous as to all trustees present. Let me get back my thing and then. Okay, and that's, and so we will be moving into executive session to conduct the superintendent's evaluation, which is required to be done by January thirty-first, I believe that's the date. Megan, if I can ask you, typically, it would seem the best course of action to not have our regular secretary stay for the evaluation, since we're talking about confidential personnel matters in connection with our superintendent. So I can take notes as the acting secretary, unless you think it's, we, it's, I think one of the first times we have to take notes during executive session, so I just want to get some advice about how to proceed.
There's no requirement as to who is the note taker.
Okay.
So as long as minutes are taken and ultimately approved by the board, that's fine.
Quick question?
Sure.
Could I propose that we move number twelve in front of number eleven, just in case there is any public comments, so they don't have to wait until after?
Well, we didn't change the agenda at the end of the agenda, and it usually seems that before you determine the terms of a contract, that we know whether there's a vote of approval or disapproval for the person?
Oh, so they could comment on that one? Now, I'm just talking about the public comment, in case anybody here wants to make public comment, they don't have to stick around.
Right, I understand it, but it just, it's an awkward process for trustees to determine what the terms of a possible change in the superintendent's contract is.
This has nothing, I'm not, I'm not talking about the contract.
That, that is what.
He's talking about public comment on non-agenda.
Just regular public comment. I thought you meant for number.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Oh, I got it. Okay, is there any objection to taking public comment on non-agenda items, not on number eleven A one at this time rather than at the very end of the meeting?
Thank you.
And I'm seeing no objections by anybody? So we will make that amendment to the agenda, and we will allow public comment on non-agenda items, which is, and twelve on the agenda to occur now. And so it's the same terms that we had talked about at the beginning of the meeting. If you have any comments on something which we haven't talked about tonight, but you want to make us aware of anything that the district has supervision or interest in, you come to the podium, there's a button you can press, and we ask you to limit them to about three minutes. And also, if you have an unusual spelling of your name or you represent an organization, identify that organization. Is there any public comment on non-agenda items? Thank you. That's a good suggestion, trustees. Thank you. So seeing none, then we will take a quick break while everyone clears the room, and Lenora, I will keep the minutes and will send you the necessary public record minutes, and then I'll prepare the executive session minutes.